I'd like to call the General Committee to meet and order whatever I've preached rise, put a prayer and pledge allegiance. Ms. Fochey?
Dear Heavenly Father, we call upon you this evening, asking for your guidance in our decision-making. Give us the wisdom to make our judgments based on the best interests of this community and the children we serve. And be with us tonight as we celebrate the accomplishments of many of our students who have done so extremely well representing our schools and our community at the national level. These things we ask in your name.
Ms. Isar, would you lead us in a pledge, please?
Yes. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Fochey, would you do a roll call, please?
Mr. Campbell.
Here.
Mr. Egan.
Here.
Ms. Jackson. Ms. Lee Bowman.
Present.
Ms. Lemoine.
Here.
Ms. Isar.
Here.
Mr. England.
Here.
Mr. Long.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Warner.
Here.
And Ms. White.
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Fochey. Okay, right now, we're going to do the presentation for Academic Games, our national team. So we have Ms. Merritt Lamenta. Good afternoon.
Good evening, good evening. It's my pleasure tonight to get to present the National Academic Games team to you, their coaches, and the numerous awards they won at the national tournament in Knoxville in April. So I do have Mr. Palazola, Selena Lee, and Ms. Hall, who are going to roll out the numerous trophies and awards the students and coaches earn. And they spoil us every year because there are over 3,000 students who compete in these competitions. And many come from all over the country and don't go home with any thinkers or any awards. And as you can see, they did a phenomenal job. And the group we had came home with many, many awards, so...
So we shone.
Yes, we shone as they usually do. And they shine in so many ways. They don't just shine with these awards. They shine in that they are not just phenomenal players and teammates, but they're phenomenal people. They're kind, they're courteous, they are actually role models for the other kids to see how you should behave at a tournament, in competition, whether they win or they lose. And for that, I'd like to thank the parents at this time. It's a phenomenal job. It's one thing to compete, but to compete with integrity, dignity, and pride, and also help each other along the way, that's a phenomenal feat in and of itself. I would like to say it is a great cause to go to the tournament in Knoxville. And as over the past few years, we've actually had a tremendous relationship with Chalmers Refining, and they did give a generous donation of $15,000 to help defray the cost for the students going to the tournament. And that allowed them to spend more time studying and working hard to go instead of having to fundraise. So that was a big generous commitment that they've done for us for multiple years. And it's really helped a great deal. So, without further ado, I'm going to go ahead and introduce the coaches and students who are the stars of the show tonight. And as they come up, just so everyone knows, they're going to come in and they're going to shake the hands with each board member, and they'll get a proclamation as we go. And we'll start with the middle school, middle division team, and the coaches. I actually have something for the coaches myself up here. So the students and the schools get the awards, but we each year get something for each coach to commemorate the tournament with them. And this year, I was able to get the photo of their team with their awards on their plaque. So, yeah, so we tried to get that special made for them this year. So we'll start off with middle division. And the middle division earned a fifth-place team award in presidents, a fifth-place team award in propaganda, and had a seventh-place individual. And any place I read to you, that means the national tournament gave an award for it. They either gave a thinker or a medal for it. So anyone I announce that had an award, that means they received one of these awards you see up here tonight. So we'll start off with Ms. Lori Gilchrist, the coach of the middle division team.
Thank you, Lori.
Thank you, Lori. You're just great.
And we did have two middle division players who could not be with us tonight. Ms. Jenna Jamore and Maya Dufresne, they did go to the tournament, they couldn't be with us tonight. So next up for middle division, we have Connor Dewey. And next, we have Brennan Holliday. And our final middle division member is the individual who earned the seventh-place individual president award, Christian Miller. And the elementary team was national runner-up team in presidents, second in the nation in presidents. They had an eighth-place individual in presidents, propaganda sixth-place team, and sweeps, which means they take the scores from all four games combined and see which team scored the highest in all four games combined. Elementary division team was fifth place in sweeps. When you add all the games up, they were the fifth-highest team. And they also had an individual who was eighth place in sweeps, eighth in the nation with all four games combined, elementary. And the coach, Melinda Hall, actually was the onset's division coordinator, the onset's appeal panel member, and an equations competition judge, Ms. Melinda Hall. And the first student from elementary division is Bryce Watson. And our next elementary team member was the eighth-place individual award for presidents. So he was eighth place in the nation in presidents, Enzo Martin Verneertje. And our final elementary team member was the eighth-place individual in sweeps. So when you add all four games up, he scored the eighth-highest of all the students in the elementary division in all four games. That's going to be Jack McMullin. The senior division team was fourth place in the nation in presidents. Propaganda, they were the third-place team in the nation. They had the fifth-place team, sixth-place team sweeps award, and a 10th-place individual award for sweeps, 10th-place individual. And the two coaches are Jonathan Palazola and Abby Schilling. And our first team member for senior division is Nagia Paul. And next, we have Makai La Mahi Rain. And our next senior division member was third-place individual in propaganda. So third place in the nation in propaganda, Eva Valante. And our final senior division member was also third-place individual in propaganda and 10th place in the nation in sweeps. When you add all four games up, Colby Barrett. And our final group is the high school junior division team. The high school junior division team were national champions in presidents. They had a ninth-place individual in presidents. In equations, a national runner-up individual, second in the nation individual. Onsets, third-place team in onsets. Undefeated individual in onsets. In propaganda, fifth-place team, a ninth-place individual. And in sweeps, add all four games up, they were the third-highest team in the nation. And a fourth-place individual in the nation in sweeps, fourth place in the nation. So we'll start off with our two coaches, Jonathan Palazola and Abby Schilling. I had to get them two plaques because the awards wouldn't fit all in one. So you had to get one for senior and one for junior. Thank you, guys, thank you. Y'all can go around again, you have another proclamation for junior. We couldn't fit them all on one plaque or proclamation. There you go. You earned it, you might as well walk around. Don't mess it up, right. Cars, first junior division team, Nora Ambela-Hawke. And our next team member from senior division was actually the ninth-place presidents individual award. So ninth place in the nation in presidents, Tenia White. Our next senior team member was ninth-place individual in the nation in propaganda and ninth place in presidents, Kimberly Quintanilla. And our final team member from senior division was ninth-place presidents individual, national runner-up in equations, perfect score in equations, fourth-place sweeps, meaning add all four games up, she's fourth in the nation, perfect score in onset, she's shy and doesn't want me to say all this, that's why she's trying to rush me up, but I'm going to say it anyway, and ninth-place individual in propaganda, Selena Lee. Okay, just a couple more. I did also want to recognize one of our former players who came up through our system through third grade and up for Academic Games. He's coached with us through college, and now he's now an attorney, and put into his contract with the firm he works for, he has to be off this section of the year to be at Academic Games. He's helped us coach the math games for many, many years. He's also now the head of the middle division. He runs the national tournament, middle division, Ryan Gregoire. And almost to the end, I can't say enough about our local and national coordinator who helped us put on the local tournaments, worked all year, did all the national work, got everything ready for Nationals, and pretty much helped run the show at Nationals, Ms. Gina Azovado.
And what our students have done up in Tennessee is very, very fantastic. So let's give everybody a hand for that. And also, I know we said it before, but we'd like to thank the parents for letting their students, their children, come to our school system to represent our parish, and because it really makes our parish and our district shine. So we really thank you for that. And we look forward to next year, but just look at this, this is amazing.
It's amazing, this is no small feat, it really is not, no small feat.
Ms. Fochey?
And I just want to say, like I probably say each and every year, Academic Games, the national tournaments, have been held since the 1960s. And we here in St. Bernard Parish have had teams competing, I know, since the 1970s, the early 1970s. And we have a very, very long tradition of producing extremely great Academic Games players, but as Ms. Lamenta has said, even more so, just great young people. And she did recognize the parents mainly for that accomplishment. But we like to think that we've had something to do with that from the educational perspective as they have come to us and grown. But what really makes me feel good each and every year is that we get such accolades from the people at Nationals on how wonderful our kids are, as competitors, of course, but as Ms. Lamenta has said, also as people. They represent our schools and our parish, our community, extremely well. We are just so happy to call them our own, and they're wonderful representatives from here in St. Bernard Parish. And I hope that, just like we have been involved in this since the 1970s, that this continues to go on and on. And when I see a Ryan Gregoire who came and began playing in third grade with us and went through and came back in college, and he is in his own, he's in a law practice now where he writes into his contract that he has to have this week off to go to national competition, it's just, I think, quite an accomplishment that we can all be very, very, very proud of. We see some of our coaches, of our teams, who have come back and have played as students, and that's really rewarding as well. So this is a program, I know that a lot of times people talk about athletics, and what did the football team do, and the softball team, and whatever, but this team, this academic games team, is so important to our schools and our community, and really make us proud that we have a very, very strong academic program here within our school system, and can produce such wonderful, wonderful representatives like we saw here tonight. So thank you to our teachers and coaches, our parents, and most of all, our students for representing us so well at the national.
Any other board members, would you say anything?
Okay, thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
All right, right now, we'll take a five-minute break before we go into our regular meetings. So thank you. And thank you, parents, again.
Thank you.
(coughing)[373.43]
Motion passes ten, Ms. Voeche. Ten zero.
And then, just before I go, I guess I wanted to introduce Chantel Skellinger, who's our preschool coordinator. Many of you know Chantel, and she's going to be assuming a lot of the duties and responsibilities that she'll all want with preschool. And again, you know, whatever accolades I get up here, it's all because of her and her team and our teachers and staff that are working diligently every day to make our program what it is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we have three point two, the Reimagine Grant, that's work for the program.
Yeah.
And I don't know.
Hi, I'm Aline LaBeuf. I am the CTE and Dual Enrollment Coordinator here. So tonight I'm going to talk to you about the Reimagine Grant. And if you're wondering about what that is, it's a grant that LDOE kind of put together for school systems. They set aside some of the SR3 funds for school systems to come up with new innovative ideas to implement, to make schools just better, change them, transform them. And school systems could pick from, I'm sorry, let me take a step back. There were eighty applicants. They awarded thirty-six grants, and seventeen parishes were awarded. And school systems could pick from ten different options of what they wanted to do. We picked a school model of innovation. We completed an application. We went through an interview, and we were awarded the Reimagine Grant money for the school model of innovation. So we focused our school model on dual enrollment. I listed up here our current dual enrollment offerings. I was here a little while back telling you a little bit about them. We have associate degrees in aerospace, P-Tech, Coastal. We have technical offerings that we provide for our students and academic offerings currently right now. But we really wanted to expand that, to offer more offerings to all of our students. So in order to do that, we applied for this grant, and we paired it with our fast-forward initiatives. So if you look on this slide, we have all of the fast-forward initiatives that we are setting forth to BSEE in June. So those are transfer degrees, apprenticeships in nursing and in culinary. Again, trying to give our students a vast variety of opportunities and as many opportunities to earn at least six hours of dual enrollment credit while they are in high school. And we want all students to get these opportunities, our special education students, our economically disadvantaged students, all students. We wanted to build this opportunity for them. So we're hoping to use these funds to help support those students, the ones that are, you know, need, that are struggling and need extra support, maybe to get some tutoring for them. In order to provide more access to these opportunities, we wanted to increase our academic offerings on Sherman High's campus. So we wanted to certify some of our teachers to be adjunct teachers at Nunez. So we wanted to use some of those fundings for that, as well as to provide transportation, materials, to market this to the middle schoolers so they know what options that they have when they get to the high school. And so that's our goal, to get six hours of dual enrollment credit to all of our students. The Reimagine Grant is broken into phases. There's Phase One. This is the planning phase. We have to show that we are ready, that we have a good foundation. And in order to do that, we have to develop thirteen deliverables with the help of technical assistance from Empower Schools. Usually, these deliverables are kind of set aside for school systems to complete within a year. We are trying to complete them within, basically, the summer because we want to start implementing Phase Two and getting our students into these pathways, getting that dual enrollment credit starting in this August. There are some roles and responsibilities that goes with this grant. I'm the project coordinator for the grant, so I work closely with LDOE and Empower Schools to make sure I'm going to all the meetings and doing all the things that we need to do to stay on track with our grant. Ms. Voeche leads our group, helps us make those decisions. We have school leaders involved from Sherman High School, and we have an advisory committee as well as Empower Schools. The advisory committee is made up of school people. It's Ms. Voeche, myself, Ms. Lametta, Ms. Watson, representing Sherman High, Ms. Seibert, Special Programs, and Ms. Pritchard, our business community liaison. So within this advisory committee, we're working together to build all of these deliverables to make the foundation for Phase One, to do all of the planning. One of those deliverables is our stakeholder engagement. When we get to that point, we'll bring in our community members. We'll bring in Nunez Community College because they're going to play a big role in this. We'll bring in business. We'll bring in industry, just to make sure that we're selecting the right curriculums, the right classes, and that we're on the right track. So lastly, there are, like I said, thirteen deliverables that we're working on currently right now to make sure that they all happen. And this is where we are. We're going to come back in a few months to update you on our progress on these deliverables and towards implementation as well.
Yes, sir. Can you tell us how much this grant is for?
So it's split up into two funding, one for Phase One and one for Phase Two. Phase One is $300,000. Phase Two is a million.
And that's a one-time thing? Or is this something that's done every year?
It is a one-time grant.
Okay.
But it's over multiple years?
Yes.
It's not to be done in one year?
Okay.
What, and then just to maybe do a little framework, framing this a little bit, you know how everybody talks about all the federal money that was coming down through this SR program and going into schools? Well, each school system throughout the state of Louisiana got a certain number of dollars for COVID-related activities and things that could be considered COVID-related. And some of it had to do with curriculum, but we had to spend lots of money, you know, on the masks and the cleansers and all that stuff that we needed. And there are some curriculum monies. Well, the state has a holdback. They take 10% of the funds that comes into the state of Louisiana, and they keep it at the state level. And what they do with some of that money is to go out with a competitive funding process. So what they did, and if you look at one of the slides that Ms. LaBeuf presented, where you see possible choices, where they say expansion, replication, innovative cluster, rural collaboration, all of these different types of things, and there's one that is a school model innovation. Well, when we looked at these categories, there were many things we really didn't want to do. You know, there's a year-round, a balanced calendar where you change the dates of your schools. It's closing some schools and consolidating others. And there were some, I guess, some types of endeavors we didn't feel suited us or things that our community, we felt would, that would benefit the community. So we were, to be honest, we were sitting around at the last day for this and said, well, you know, we could, we're doing this fast-forward program. We could use some funding for this. So we think we could make that fit under the school innovation model. So we put together a quick, I guess, grant application. Ms. LaBeuf was there. Ms. Lametta was there. Ms. Seibert was there with our federal programs, and I'm not sure who else was in that meeting that day. And we said, let's fill out this application. So low and behold, because we're so good, right, there were eighty applicants throughout the state, and they funded thirty-six. And we were one of the thirty-six funded grant applications. So this process that they have set up is somewhat a very cumbersome process. We, in the grant, what we did was say, we want every student who is in high school, our goal is to, for them to earn at least six hours of dual enrollment credit, whether it be in academic credit or CTE, Career Technical Development, whatever pathway they choose, so that when they graduate high school and they go to a four-year college or a two-year academic part of, say, what Nunez is, they would already have at least two college courses. So our goal is ultimately to get every student in that arena, or if it's not academic credit, if they're going for some of these pathways in HVAC, electrical, CNA, all of these different types of potential professions, then they do at least two courses in that. Now, that would be the minimum we're looking for. The maximum is that a student graduates with an associate degree. So we're looking at students acquiring anywhere from six hours of credit all the way through sixty hours of credit, depending upon their abilities, their passion, their interest, and the programs that we're offering. So then we sat down and said, well, if that's a goal for all kids, what programs don't we have that we can expand on and introduce that are still in approved pathways the state has and will meet the needs of our kids, and then we can try to get them approved as pathways? And we were doing some of this already. This was nothing new because we've been talking about, and we've been involved in this for years. But this is going to help a funding source to give us a jump start in helping to expose more kids and paying more tuition and books and fees and transportation and all of the related costs involved. And what Ms. LaBeuf has put on there, we're going to be going to the BSEE Board in June to get some additional pathways approved. There's going to be an apprenticeship program with Ochsner Hospital that, while still in high school, the person, the young student can earn a nursing degree and go through a full apprenticeship. It might be an LPN or whatever. It won't be their four-year degree. They'll get the beginning of that. And if they want to pursue and get a bachelor's, then they can go the next two years. So they can get two years of it paid for with us. And they can get clinicals done with us. So those types of programs. And we have those as well in HVAC and electrical and such, the partnerships that Ms. LaBeuf has been setting up all of this time. The Restaurant Association, that we're doing one with the Culinary Arts. And we just, you know, as we talked about before, our ProStar team took top honors in Louisiana and represented Louisiana in the national competition, and those kids are part of the culinary program. And in this, there's going to be a youth restaurant pre-apprenticeship program as well. So kids that are really into the culinary arts and those types of things. And then if you have just a real academic kid, I know I'm going to a four-year university. I mean, that's what I want. Well, they can take with us and Nunez the basic courses in English, math, social studies, and the sciences, so that they can earn up through an associate degree, and if not, maybe the full sixty hours for the associate degree, anywhere from six, nine, twelve, you know, thirty hours, as much as they are, as much as they can do and they want to do. And when they go to LSU or ULL or Southeastern, they could have their whole first year done, already paid for. And if they're eligible for TOPS, still have four years of eligibility with TOPS. So as we've talked about before, this is a great program. And when we applied for this particular grant, we were looking at a source of funding that we can give it a really good jump start, get it going, and work through a sustainability model as we progress with it. And that sustainability model, one of the big pieces of that, Ms. LaBeuf mentioned it, is many of our teachers, to be an adjunct professor at, say, at Nunez or at UNO or anywhere, you have to have at least eighteen graduate hours of credit in the content area, not in education. But if you want to teach mathematics, you need eighteen graduate hours of pure mathematics, not the teaching of math, but actual math. Same thing in English, same thing in the sciences. Some of our teachers already have that, and they're eligible to teach those courses on our campus with our kids, with Nunez giving the credit. And there's an articulation matrix, and I know Catherine's sitting here shaking her head because she knows all about this. There's an articulation matrix that we can ensure that the courses our kids take are immediately transferable to any four-year college in the state of Louisiana. So if they're taking it at Nunez and on our campus, they go to LSU, LSU recognizes it and gives them credit for it, no questions asked, Southeastern, ULL, or whatever they wish to go. So for all the kids, whether they're going through the academic route or going through a career and technical education route, this is the seed money, hopefully, that we can get that program in place. We can begin to help our teachers get the credentials that they need, that they can teach some of those courses on our campus. Because, you know, some kids, they like the thought of, well, I'm going to go over to Nunez or UNO and take the course, or take some courses. And I may not hardly ever be on campus my senior year on the high school campus. But there are other kids who want that full high school experience. You know, they want to be involved in the activities in high school and still do some of this. So if our own teachers can acquire the credentials to teach these classes, because then they can be an adjunct professor at Nunez or at UNO or wherever, because they will have that credentialing, we're going to spend some of this money in helping our teachers get those credentials that they need to teach these classes on our campuses. So we're very, very excited about this whole initiative. We already had, you know, we had already been planning it. But now we've got some dollars that we can put into it and spend it over a two- to three-year period and get the foundation of it accomplished. And as we then reach out, this advisory committee that you see on here, it had to be school-based because the first thing I wanted to do was say, well, let me get a business representative and then this representative. They said, no, it's got to be internal, your own people, that you've got to go ahead and plan it. And then we will reach out to the community and the stakeholders. Because the sustainability model is going to encompass forming even more and more long-lasting relationships and partnerships with the businesses in the community and the, you know, in the chamber, especially the college and such, so that everybody in the community is aware of it, they'll back it, and maybe they'll help with some of it. You know, if we have some apprentices, apprenticeships or job openings, those kinds of things. So our kids will get some real-life experiences, not only in the clinicals they may have to take in a medical arena, but in some apprenticeships and some of the other trades. So we're excited about that.
So Ms. Voeche, you mentioned BSEE. It has to be approved by BSEE, whatever we do with this grant money?
Yes.
Okay.
That's why we have to, I'll be honest, we have to go through this process, this quote, plan it. We know what we want to do. Now we have to sit down and write it in an acceptable way and have it scored through their rubric. They want it scored with thirteen different deliverables. And you're supposed to have a year to do that. We didn't want it way to you. I got our group together and said, we can do this this summer. So our goal is to finish that work in three months, not in a full year.
So you being a member of BSEE, is that a conflict for you?
Oh, no, no, no. Because our programs come before BSEE all the time.
Okay. And even though it affects your school system, it's...
It's okay.
It's okay.
Because really, once we get these pathways approved, to be honest, any kid in the region can go and avail themselves. If they want to go to, if they, for example, are in Placaman, Orleans, or some of their Jeffersons or whatever, and they go to Nunez, if we set that pathway with the Nunez group, if they're in this region, they can, they can access that pathway. We would not put funds for those kids. But the pathways that are established there that we get approved through BSEE will be what we call Region One Pathways. Am I right, Ms. LaBeuf?
With the exception of the youth, that will be statewide.
With the exception of the what?
The restaurant apprenticeship.
Okay, that'll be a statewide. Anybody in the state can. The other ones, anybody in our region can. Can you describe what our region is?
So Region One, our workforce region, it's Orleans, St. James, St. Charles, St. Tammany, Jefferson. So anyone kind of within our, and St. John, within our driving kind of distance.
If they go and follow the pathway that we get approved.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. White.
Thank you. Anybody else? Ms. Ditzler?
This is a tremendous thank you for the presentation. This is a tremendous opportunity for our students. And I know we started dual enrollment many years ago, and it's just wonderful that we were able to continue to grow it. And again, I mean, for any one of our students to come out of high school with thirty hours of, in an associate's degree, it's, like I said, a tremendous opportunity. So thank you for, to administration, Ms. LaBeuf, and committee for engaging in this grant. We all know grants are not easy to write for. So thank you for that tremendous effort and additional work. And our students would definitely be the benefactors. So thank you very much. Great job.
Thank you, Ms. Ditzler. Mr. Warren?
Thank you, Mrs. White. And thank you, Ms. LaBeuf, for your very informative presentation. Since I began serving on this board, I've been amazed at how many times we have innovative programs and processes and procedures that this board, this administration, the school system takes on and just leads the state in so many different ways, so many different times. So I just wanted to congratulate you on your grant and the administration. And thank you for always being out there in front, leading the state. Thanks. All I wanted to say, thanks.
Thank you. And anyone else? Hi, Catherine?
Again, congratulations on the successful funding of this grant. And I wanted to say too, that looking ahead to all of the future dual enrollment offerings, I'm so excited to see early childhood and the teaching grades one through five on that list of future offerings. Because again, to your point, you know, this is going to be a really innovative way for us to get students. We know we have a national teacher shortage. So for us to be able to get our high school students interested in becoming future teachers, I know that you already have some of the groundwork for that laid already with the coursework that Ms. Melissa Moynan was offering last semester. So it's so great to see that we'll be able to encourage our students to follow an education pathway and then hopefully have them return to come back and teach for the district. So very, very excited to see that. Thank you.
Anyone else have questions or comments?
Do you have a number to how much enrollments they have for the next semester?
For next semester? Not yet. We are still working on next semester's schedule.
How about, what enrollment do we have right now?
Our current enrollment, we have about, let's say, ninety students that are going to Nunez. But then we have another, I'm just kind of spitballing here, a hundred that are on academic, in academic courses right now on our campus, in English composition, in basic food prep, in media art. So those, and in Spanish too, right now. Some of them overlap. They're taking English and Spanish at the same time.
Anyone else? Thank you, Ms. LaBeuf. We go on to three point three, Annual Review of Guide to Student Conduct.
How are you doing?
Hi.
Hello, folks. Good evening. Thank you for having us tonight. Mr. Powell and I have the pleasure of tag-teaming tonight's presentation. As you can see within your folder tonight, three point three is the new Student and Family Handbook and the Guide to Student Conduct. This is a major revision that we're proposing to the board this evening. And so this was something that we had the pleasure of working on together. So we'll be able to kind of go through this process this evening, highlighting some of the changes that were made for you all, and then moving forward. So I'll be going over some of the more policy-ended pieces while Mr. Powell will be speaking to you about the discipline and dress code components. So I'll begin by just speaking of the process. As you can see, this looks like a very different guide to student conduct than what we've proposed to you in the past. Part of what happened this year, as we audited the other districts throughout the state, many of them moved their guides to student handbooks, also their student family handbook. Those terms are kind of used interchangeably online as digital resources. And so one of the reasons that we had kept our Guide to Student Conduct more brief in the past was that we went to print, and everyone received a printed copy. Moving forward, we will be, and this was already located on our website currently, but we gave every student a copy. And as you can imagine, 12,000 copies of our current Guide to Student Conduct was a little pricey. So we kept it as concise as possible. As we noticed other districts started to move their guides online and provide students just on a request basis, a hard copy, we also noticed that other districts' guides got much more comprehensive. And so what you'll see here, as we make this switch to offering this to parents and families online, and if they request a version of this in hard copy, we will have those available for them. We were able to make a holistic handbook for families. The vast majority, 99% of what is included, we already had either in our policy manual. It was located on our websites. It was in different handbooks, either in the school handbooks or in different places. So very little of this is actually going to be new. Most of this was just located in different components of our policy and procedures that you could find online. So as, you know, I said, we'll be going digitally with this, as well as comprehend, it's a more comprehensive view. So what I'm going to do is just quickly go over each of the sections so you know what was changed. Again, this shouldn't take more than just a few minutes. The vast majority of this is going to be semantics. But if you want to follow along in the table of contents, I'll go ahead and just walk through it so you know what to expect. So the first section, Section One, is going to be the general information section. This was a semantics change, just to formatting. This information was moved, this was previously at the end of the book. It was moved to the very beginning of the book. And we included our strategic plan, which you all have already approved. As we move forward, Cognia, which was formerly known as Advanced Ed, does require that we give families and parents the opportunities to see our strategic plans. We included it here for them. Section Two, contact information. Again, this was information that we had previously included in our Guide to Student Conduct at the end. We had moved that to the front, just so families had direct access to this. We've also included a little bit more information about school board meetings, school board times, and things of that nature, just to ensure that all of our parents and stakeholders are aware of that. Section Three, admissions. This is again, another semantics cleanup. And this really was about taking what was in the policy manual. Over the last several years, we've made a lot of revisions to our policy manual and just ensuring that there is parallels between our policy manual and this. Not that there wasn't before, but we just tightened that. Section, the next section, Section Four, registration. The vast majority of this is substantive, what I, or is semantics. What is substantive here is we are looking forward to being able to offer a online opportunity for families to register. And so that is also consistent with districts throughout the state right now, parents being able to register students online as an option. So that language was included into this new portion. We also just cleaned up and tightened up some of the requirements for that piece of registration. Attendance, this is verbatim out of our policy manual, and this again is just a semantics cleanup. Children Nutrition Program, also semantics, and some of the verbiage and language from our website was included to this section. So that's the first component. The next piece is, I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Powell, who's going to talk to you all about the discipline policy component and then the dress code.
Okay. Thank you. The committee for suggesting, thanks to the Guide to Discipline, met April the sixth. And I want to say that they didn't recommend anything to the Guide to Student Conduct, but they had some suggestions. And they wanted to make sure that the hair length of the young men do not go over their collar. So they want to continue emphasizing that, that the hair length must not go below the collar. And the other recommendation was that they are not only recommending earrings for the high school boards, but they are recommending earrings for the other students just as well. So those are the two recommendations from the committee that met April the sixth.
Okay.
Yes.
I got a quick question.
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Are you saying they're recommending that they wear earrings?
Yes. The middle school and elementary students.
So...
Are they, or they should be allowed to wear earrings?
Well, yes, they should be allowed to wear earrings under your... Well, yes, they should be allowed to wear earrings under your guidance promotions.
So, what was in, what was previously in the guide to student conduct was the stipulation was that high school boys would be allowed to wear one stud per year. The recommendation being made to you all tonight is that the word "high school" be removed. So, it would just be one categorical, boys can have one stud per year without the specification around high school.
And what was the recommendation concerning the hair, the hair length?
They want to continue making sure that the hair does not go, touch the collar. They want to make sure that that continued, the hair length, still stay above the collar.
Well, what they do is, we've always allowed the students, if they have longer hair, that they fasten it so that it does not go below the collar. So, you will see boys with long hair. But during school hours, when they're in school, it is supposed to be fastened not to go below the collar.
Okay.
And we've always had that, and I think Mr. Powell's just reiterating.
Yes.
I was just hoping that we weren't getting into the hair issue. I know Ms. Dyssart and a few other board members can remember the headaches we had years ago concerning hair length. And I wouldn't want to open up that can of worms, so to speak, again. So, are we going to keep the policy as it has been for quite a few years now?
So, the policy is that the hair length cannot extend below the collar. Now, that is not that boys cannot, if boys do have longer hair, it needs to be pulled up and above the collar, either in a bun or however that might be, it should not extend below the collar.
And Ms. Powell, you've been finding that it's, the boys have been adhering to the policy over the last few years?
Yes, and the administration has done a phenomenal job of enforcing the policy. It has not been a big issue. It's not been a big issue.
And what is the penalty if they do violate it and continue to violate it?
Well, then it, it could be, they'll try to talk to the kid. They'll bring the parent in. If this doesn't work, it could be a suspension. But most times, the administration normally takes care of this. It has not been a big issue.
It's not been a big issue.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Do we have any more questions? Thank you so much.
I also want to say, too, mention about, they mentioned something about bullying. I want to say, the schools have been doing a phenomenal job in looking into the bullying because we ask, anytime their parent comes in and says, "My child's been bullied up, blah, blah, blah." I asked the administration, give them the policy, give them a form, let them fill it out. And then administration, look into it and make a determination, is or is it not bullying? So, I want to mention that just as well. So, the administration is doing a phenomenal job in giving parents the form to fill it out. Because as you know, everybody's claiming, "My child's been bullied." So, to solve that problem, I asked the administrator to give them a form and go through it.
Thank you.
The next section after dress code and discipline is emergency situation. So, this actually wasn't previously included. One of the things that we're undergoing right now is work with the LSU Stevenson Institute to update our crisis and emergency plans. And so, there will be verbiage in the, in the handbook that will reflect the information that will be provided there. And health and medical policies, this is a semantics cleanup. This, Ms. Lori McGinnis and Jeremy Kurth have audited this section just to ensure this is up to, up to date with everything that we're doing in the schools. And then finally, Title IX, sexual harassment policy. This reflects the policy and procedures that you adopted about a year and a half ago and is consistent with what we're seeing other K-12 institutions implement. And so, you know, that is a procedural change that's been included into the guide to student conduct. Again, you passed the policy that parallels that Title IX change for sexual harassment about a year ago. And then the final one is a parent and family engagement policy. This is an S A requirement, and this was also a policy that you have previously passed. It is now just being included into our student handbook. So, that's, it looks like a lot. But that's basic, you know, it's basically taking things that we already had in multiple places and putting them in one space for our families.
Thank you. Do we have any questions, Mr. England? Okay, we have a recommendation. Wait for a second. Shelton? And do we have, Mr. Long?
I have another follow-up question.
Okay.
I think in previous years, I could be wrong, but I think we, we used to have the parents sign that they had received a copy of this.
Yep.
How is this online thing going to work with that?
Yes, we're still working through some of the logistics with the form signatures. And we are looking, a lot of the other districts have electronic submission of the forms being signed. We've also seen some of the districts send that piece home, notifying parents that they have the guide online. So, we've seen some districts do it a number of different ways. We're looking into that. It is required by law that parents sign off that they received the guide along with some other forms that need to be signed. But we, that's on our radar, and we'll come back to you with more details around how the forms are going to be signed.
Okay. It sounds like it would be something important because the first thing they'll throw up at us if they are, their child is accused of violating it, they say, "Well, I didn't, I didn't receive a copy."
Right, sure, yep. And we'll also have copy, you know, even on the appendix, which isn't in your book, but once the forms are finalized, they'll be included in the appendix, so they'll also have another copy there. One of the other things that is a really nice feature about adding this online is the translation component. And so, because it will be housed online, parents have the opportunity to translate the entire guide into whatever language they need, and they can also have it ADA compliant. So, it will be able to be read aloud to parents if they need that additional support. So, it just really opens up the possibilities for more families to be able to access this document, given its important nature, right? So, it's all of our policies and procedures.
Okay. Thank you. It is, it is a nice, a nice booklet, and it seems very, very comprehensive. So, it's good, it's good. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion from Mr. England, seconded by Mr. Smith. And we have to take a vote to approve of the student, guide to student conduct handbook.
Motion passes ten zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. White. This is personnel items. Ms. Boche? Personal changes from May twenty twenty-two?
Dr. Avio is standing.
All right, Dr. Avio.
He's interim interim.
The man of the hour.
Short-term interim.
Right.
Personal changes in front of you. So, we had our job fair this past Saturday, and those things will be coming out as we track teachers and get acceptance. So, that'll be coming down the pike as we go forward. Any questions?
I won't do it. No, I'm fine. No, 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 we're good.
Okay. Any questions? Right. Each year, I know Mr. Granberry, when he was in charge, every year, we came before you with our, the St. Peter Parish Public Schools Personnel Evaluation Plan for your approval. So, that's what we have in front of you. Our committee has no changes and additions, unlike the guide to student conduct. So, we're, we're going again with the same personnel evaluation plan at this time. If the state implements any changes, then of course, we make those changes in the plan. So, we need, you know, we're going to need your approval.
I would like to make a motion at this time that we send to the full board the acceptance of the personnel evaluation plan.
One second.
Motion passes ten zero.
Okay, and so, each year, again, we come before you to let you see the letter that we're going to be sending out to our substitutes and who are in our, who work for us, to assure them that we're going to be rehiring them as we move forward to the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. So, again, it needs your approval.
Have them, go ahead. Okay, Mr. Campbell, motion, seconded by Ms. Lemoine. Any further questions for Dr. Mr. Long?
I know we've had trouble finding teachers. Have we been having a problem with substitutes this year?
Yeah. Yeah, it's been a struggle.
It's been a struggle?
Yeah. I mean, we've been having difficulty, substitute teachers, substitute custodians, cafeteria, maintenance custodians. So, it's been, it's been a challenge. So, you know, we are planning to do some things over the summer to maybe entice some subs to come in, train them a little bit, get them in, and, and help plan for the, for the coming year. But that's been, it's not just us. It's pretty much nationwide, trouble getting substitutes as well as certified people.
I was just out west last, last week, you know, and I was watching the television in my spare time, and, and they're having a major problem in, in out west right now. And so, they're looking for teachers any way that they can right now.
And our alternate cert program has really helped us. I know, you know, we're in the process of recruiting people for that. And, you know, that's been a big plus for us. Probably over a hundred and five of our teaching corps has gone through our Teach St. Peterhouse Alternate Cert Program. So, that's been a way to get career changers to come into the profession. So, that's been a plus.
Right. In fact, they even going back to trying to get their retirees to come to get back into the work force.
And that's in legislation or it's out of committee. I don't know if it's, I don't think it's gotten voted on yet, but yeah.
And I believe we increased the pay of substitutes a while back, didn't we?
Well, oh, substitutes, a little, but not, not a whole lot.
About forty or sixty dollars a day?
I think it's sixty a day for someone who has, just a day by day, not certified or anything, and then eighty
For a degree.
For ones who have degrees. The, yeah.
Any other questions? We have a motion in a second. Please cast your vote.
Motion passes ten zero.
Thank you, Don.
All right.
Okay, item number five, Insurance Committee, Mr. Egan.
Gentlemen?
Okay, in your package, you have the renewal proposal for flood insurance. We have Mr. Reggie Clemens from Clemens Insurance Services here with us tonight. And as you recall, a couple of months ago, we renewed our regular property insurance. Now, we're coming back with our flood insurance. Two months ago, the news wasn't good as we had a substantial increase in our premiums. And we were expecting the worst from what we've been seeing in the news lately about flood insurance. But we were pleasantly surprised to see a decrease this year in our premiums for flood insurance. So, we hit a twenty-two point six percent decrease overall in premiums this year. So, we're recommending renewal of our flood insurance for all of our locations for a premium one hundred and seventy-six thousand, nine hundred and sixty-six thousand.
First, is anyone else? All right, we have a second? Okay. Well, both hands. There was several hands going up. All right, I'll say Mrs. Dyssart and Mrs. Lemoine. Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know. Well, I'm going to scratch you, Mrs. Dyssart. Okay. We'll have Mr. Smith. Now, is there any further questions by the board? Okay.
The only thing is, I hope producers don't get a letter thirty days from now saying they've made an error in their, their bid.
Okay. If there's nothing... If there's nothing further, would you please vote the machines? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay, in your packets, you have our proposed two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three budget. There are five exhibits. The first four relate to the general fund. Exhibit number one is a summary of the budget for twenty-two, twenty-three. Exhibit two is a detail of revenues, projected revenues. Number three is a detail of projected expenditures. And number four shows projected cost of employee benefits changes, comparison between this year and the proposed budget for next year. And five is all the special revenue funds, budgets for the special revenue funds. Just to hit the highlights of the budget, the major changes include, one, we have some changes to revenues. Basically, we have increased, we have decreased our estimate for ad valorem revenues. As you recall, a while back, we received notification from the assessors' office that the Colonial Pipeline is ceasing operation, and they're being removed from the tax rolls. And they represented a significant part of our ad valorem revenues. So, we had to reduce those revenues to reflect those properties being taken off of the tax rolls. However, we increased in other areas. We increased sales taxes a bit because our current correlations have been higher than usual, and it indicates a trend. So, we feel confident that we'll be able to raise our revenue estimates a bit. The budget also includes increases in salaries, normal increases in salaries from movement along salary schedules and related benefits. And also, we have included the proposed salary increase from the state for all employees, fifteen hundred dollars for certified employees, seven hundred and fifty dollars for support employees and the related MFP revenues that will be beginning to offset those costs. And, and the benefits in five, you can see that we're having a net increase in employee benefits in the general fund of one hundred and eighteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-nine dollars. But that increase is mitigated by a decrease in the employee, in the contribution rates from our retirement systems. They're also going down next year, so we obviously will benefit from that. So, everything else is just minor. Regular budgeting of our normal materials and supplies and professional services and utilities are like. And the, number five, the special revenue funds represents the expected grant allocation. Some of our grants, we have projected allocation for next year, some we do not. So, we're using this year's allocations as an estimate for next year. We will come back in the fall with revision when we get the final grant allocation for those to make revision of that. But I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. Other than that, the budget is pretty straightforward.
Any questions, committee? Well, I have a question. So, with the Colonial Pipeline, when was, when will be the last, would this be the last year that they're...
No, last year, two thousand twenty-one was the last year that they paid taxes.
And how much was it?
They shut it down previously during last year. However, they were still on the tax rolls for last year. So, they paid their taxes for last year. This year, they will not pay the taxes.
How much are we looking at?
Approximately a million dollars.
Just for the school system?
Just for, just for the school system, yes.
So, in order to, how are we doing that? Are we deferring it year, every year, or how are we absorbing that loss of that?
Well, what we did was, we had gone up in other areas, and we had decreased some of our expenses. Our salary expenses adjust as higher salaries, people retire and new people come in and things of that nature. So, we just were able to accommodate it through the rest of our budget without impacting anything greatly.
Any more questions from the board?
Can I? Go ahead.
I just want to make a statement, and I'm not sure exactly what is going to happen. But when Bessie sent the MFP to the legislature, as a result of the governor's executive budget and the, into the MFP, we asked the legislature to approve a $1,500 pay raise for certificated people and $750 for support. The Revenue Estimating Conference met just this week, I think it was, early this week, and recognized additional revenue. Now, I know the governor is going and has requested that those levels be up to 2,000 for teachers and 1,000 for support personnel. I'm not sure yet what is going to happen with that. I don't know if the legislate, the legislators are going to agree to that. If they agree to that, the process, and this is where it gets real tricky, if it's going to be incorporated in the MFP, then the legislature would have to send it back to Bessie, Bessie would have to have a special meeting, update the MFP, send it back to the legislature, and it would have to go through the approval process. That's one way. A second way would be the MFP would stay like it is, because it's in the legislative process right now, and it could be, the additional monies could be appropriated outside of the formula, if the legislature decided that's how they wanted to spend some of the additional funds. So I guess what I'm saying is, I think if we would, people would contact our local legislators, our representatives, and state senators with a request that they appropriate additional funding, because it now has been recognized by the Revenue Estimating Conference. It might be beneficial to helping our local legislators maybe be on board in supporting those additional funds for all of our employees, both certificated and support. Okay, so I would encourage people out in our workforce and in the community and around this table to contact our local representatives and request their support for that.
Any more questions or comments from Mr. Fernandez? Do I have a motion on the board?
I'll make a motion that we send the General Fund and Special Revenue Budget to the full board.
I'll second it. Motion by Ms. Lemoine, seconded by Ms. Wyatt. Thank you. So we have the next one. I mean, sorry, we got a vote on it.
Motion passes ten zero.
So we have the next one, 6.2, I need to adopt 2022 and 2023 ad valorem millages to that.
Okay, also in your package, it is a resolution adopting the tax year 2022 ad valorem millages. We're adopting the same millages that we had last year. So it's noted in, on the resolution for each of the different millages. There's the constitutional millage and the three operational millages that are in the general fund, and the maintenance millage, which was approved by the voters to collect monies for the maintenance of our buildings, which is in a special revenue fund. But we are not changing any of the millages. We adopt, we are recommending we adopt the exact same millages we did in previous year.
Motion by Mr. Onglet, seconded by Mr. Smith. Please vote.
Motion passes ten zero.
Thank you. So I have section 6.3, request to approve bid tabulations for waste disposal services.
Okay, also in your package, you have a bid tabulation. We had a bid opening for collection of disposables solid waste. We had two companies that came in and put in proposals, IV Waste and Waste Pro, and we're recommending the low proposal given by IV Waste. They gave a three-year proposal, and we are recommending that we accept their year number four, subject to renewal and use to include.
I'll make a motion that we accept the low bid.
I have the, Mr. Dyssart's motion, and then Mr. Smith's second. Please vote on your.
Vote, okay.
Please vote, yes.
Motion passes ten zero.
So we have section 6.4, request to approve bid tabulations for bread and bread products for the period of July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023. Mr. Morell?
Hello, good afternoon, Mr. Flutbeaten. I'm here to ask permission to accept a bid for bread and bread products for the period of July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023, for St. Bernard Parish School Board.
Mr. Smith? I'll second it. Lemoine, please second. Please vote on your pads for me. Thank you.
Motion passes ten zero.
So 6.5, request to approve bid tabulations for milk and milk products for the period of July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023.
Yes, also, it's a request for permission to accept a bid tabulations for milk and milk products from July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023.
So move.
Ms. Wyatt, we have a motion by Ms. Wyatt, second.
I'll second.
Ms. Lemoine, second. Please vote on your tablets, you may please.
Motion passes ten zero.
All right, so my last one is 6.6, request to approve bid tabulations for food products for the period of July 1st, 2022 through December 31st, 2022.
Yes, this is our six-month bid for food products, for permission to accept the tabulations for food products through July 1st, 2022 through December 31st, 2022.
I have a motion by Mr. Warner, second.
Second.
Second with Ms. Dyssart. Please vote on the.
Motion passes ten zero.
Okay, just want to remind everyone, as we, we took a look at our proposed 22, 2022, 2023 budgets for next school year, we have to have a public hearing on those budgets before the final adoption. And that public hearing will be at the beginning of our meeting, two weeks from tonight, which is May 24th. We will open it to anyone who would have a comment or suggestion at that public hearing on our general fund and special revenue funds budgets for next school year. Also, of course, we have all of our end-of-the-year activities coming up, and I would suggest to parents and such to check your school newsletters and websites to make sure that you are up to date with the dates and times of all of the, and locations of all of the activities. We are scheduled to have Orshamah High's graduation Saturday morning, May 14th, weather permitting. Later on during this week, if we find that the weather would prohibit that graduation ceremony on Saturday morning, we would make alternate arrangements either on Sunday or Monday afternoon, and that will be decided after consultation with the National Weather Service. So we should be making a decision on that within the next day or two. On the 19th of May, which is Thursday, check your individual schools. There'll be the kindergarten and fifth grade exit ceremonies for those particular classes. And we're doing something a little different this year with our eighth grade ceremonies. We are now getting to the point that we cannot have the parking and the, and the capacity at our middle schools for the eighth grade exit ceremonies to comfortably fit all of the family members who wish to attend. So instead of limiting it like we did in the past, we talked with parish government, and on Friday, May 20th, we would normally, if y'all remember, have all the eighth grade ceremonies at the same time at their school sites. Well, we're still going to do it on Friday, May 20th, but at three different times, and we're going to have them at, locally here at the St. Bernard Civic Center, so that we can open it to more family members, rather than having it within the constraints of the TRIST gym or the AJ gym, or right now, the St. Bernard Gym, which is not usable at this moment. So at that point, I just want to remind people here and in the public, check with your middle schools. I think we're going to be doing TRIST early in the morning at about 8:30, followed by Andrew Jackson at 11:30, followed by St. Bernard Middle at 1:30. So it'll all be on the same day at three different times, and there'll be plenty of parking and more room for more family members to attend these ceremonies on the 20th. The students' last day of school, for all of those who are not in the exit grades, is Monday, May 23rd, followed by four teachers' records day, their last day on Tuesday, May 24th. And then we're going to start all of our summer programs the week of, I mean, the month of June, and we've talked about that before, summer science camps, summer skills program, and all of our offerings for the summer. So even though we're ending the school year, we are beginning the summer programs almost immediately thereafter.
It seems that we just started the school year.
It does, it does. It's been, and it's been a challenging year, but I think, yes.
Very productive, though.
Yes.
Okay, any questions for Ms. Focie? If not, item number eight, adjournment? Mr. Campbell, seconded by Ms. Egan, all in favor? This is adjourned, good night.